You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is February 15th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
It's 3:07. We'll call this meeting to order, the Michigan City Board of Commissioners. If we can stand for the pledge. Mr. Benson?
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic, religiously standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Mr. Rags, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Benson, present. Commissioner Ben?
Present.
Commissioner Reina?
Present.
And Chairman Long?
Present.
With four commissioners present, we do have a forum to do business.
Awesome. Approval of the minutes, have you guys had a chance to read through them? I know they're kind of finished late.
I recommend I don't have any issues, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
No discussion? All in favor?
Well, we got the roll.
Okay.
All right. I'll do the roll call.
Go ahead, thank you.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben?
Aye.
Commissioner Reina?
Aye.
And Commissioner Long?
Aye.
With four ayes and zero nos, the minutes have been approved.
Next, we've got chairman's opening remarks. I just kind of wanted to go over some of what I've gone through this week with getting things accomplished with HUD, moving forward with ELOC's access and all that fun stuff. We had a visit this week from Washington DC in the form of Mr. Richard Menocchio. He toured our units and kind of gave us a status report. It was not glowing, we know we have problems, but we've got every assurance that DC and Indianapolis are going to work with us to keep moving forward, which is what we need. We've got stuff on here about our ED search and other things going on, so as we come to those, we'll talk about them. And that's all I have right now. So that'll bring us to public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to speak. Okay, Jay, come up the podium, state your name for us, please. And three-minute time limit, we can't discuss anybody's individual names, but if you do have a... We're here to listen.
No, I just want to discuss my situation. I've been going back and forth with the housing authority just for a unit, just to replace the state. Getting on the Section 8 list, I don't know, I guess I was removed from the Section 8 list because they said I didn't update my info. But I have a paper saying I updated my info.
Okay.
And it didn't get in the system or whatever, and I was up at the last meeting here, and I was supposed to speak with someone, they never got back with me on anything. I've been silent for a whole month. I have heard that he said he was going to try to help me, but he never got back.
What was your name again, sorry?
Oh, yeah, Austin.
Okay, so there's thinking.
I have information regarding Miss Crawford's situation, who needs to be got to the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else? Any more public comment? Any more public comment? All right, I'll move on to the next thing. Any communication, have we received anything, Mr. Rags, that you're aware of?
No.
I mean, I don't know if it necessarily goes to your office, but I don't believe we've... I don't have any communication, so it takes under reports. At our last meeting, or maybe the one before that, we said we weren't gonna... We needed to approve our expenditures, so I've included in our packet the checks that have gone out as we've tried to make sure our vendors get paid and make sure that everybody's getting taken care of as best we can. So we can go over those if we need to. As I understand it, we just need to do a vote that says yes, we approve the expenditures, because that's what we got to pay.
Roll call.
So if you could do the roll call.
I need a motion to second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay with the bills?
Second.
Awesome, sorry, getting ahead of myself.
No problem. Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner and Commissioner Reina?
Aye.
All right, with four ayes and zero nos, the claims have been approved.
Also to go along with that, Brittany, do you have any reports to update with where we're at as far as we're getting everybody paid? Are we, how far behind are we on invoices?
I can, do you want me to go up there and tell you?
Yeah, you can go up there and let us know.
Okay, so a lot of the invoices went out to, Michelle, I would say she's been doing what she can from home. When I get it back, I'm checking the invoice, going over the numbers, making sure they're correct. We're pretty much, I think, for the most part caught up. There's like a few that will call in and say, hey, these invoices were missed. I will have them email me those invoices, I'll throw them in the system real quick and attach the invoice with it. But for the most part, I think we're pretty much caught up.
We just need our capital.
There are checks in your packet for like AMG and another level. The only one that can get rectified would be another level because he was drawn down from ELOCs for the capital funds.
Okay.
AMG, however, we have to hold off on that check until we can draw down from capital funds to pay.
I sent a message to HUD again today to see where we're at on that. I haven't checked my emails since then, so.
But other than that?
Any other questions for Brittany, for the finance?
No.
Next up is our property manager, Asher, let us know where we're at.
Good afternoon, we have 145 occupied units as of January 31st. We have 44 vacant units, 19 are rich here at Boulevard Gardens, two at Harbor Side Homes, 16 at Lakeland Estates and two Sky for a home ownership as of January 31st. We have eight units that have been renovated in Lakeland Estates, one unit is still being renovated. Work was stopped on that unit because of the contractor not giving us checks. And I did speak to him earlier this week, and he will have that unit completed by next week. Me and Mr. Long has spoken concerning the waiting lists, and we are back processing applications. I have seven, I have identified seven individuals to be moved in between next week and the week after. They, their applications were pulled already back in September, you know, the process has gone through. We had put a stop to it because of, you know, some miscommunication going on. So now we're back to housing, you know, the people that we need to house. We had zero events for January. We have a 97% vacancy rate, but of course, that is because most of our units are in line. We have housed 75 ADA tenants, which are elderly and disa- I'm sorry, disabled. We have taken zero persons to court, however, I will be sending Mr. Rags some for court this month. Another thing I would like to address the board about is our maintenance. We have a serious maintenance issue here, and we need that fixed, they said. I would like to sit down with Mr. Long and our maintenance supervisor to try to come up with a maintenance plan. That way we can get some work done on the time. I have a stack of work orders that's been, I don't know, maybe just more or just forgot about, and we're going to prioritize those by urgent to non-urgent.
Okay. Any questions for our property manager?
So we have 44 vacant units?
Altogether, yes.
Okay, and so where are we at with, and I know that we're still doing the renovations and... And what's going, well, only one is still being renovated, right?
Yes, the rest are completed.
Yes, ma'am. How soon can we get those units filled?
Well, I have seven people ready to go into those units, so those were the seven that I was speaking of. Like maybe one or two for here at Boulevard, but the rest are for, I'm sorry, Lakeland Estates.
And, I'm sorry. What's the status of the Boulevard Gardens?
The units, we, Mr. Long, I walked them, I had not walked them with Quinn recently. Me and Quinn and Ms. Hudson did those prior in October, into September, and they are ready. However, there was an issue when Bob Lane was here about this development being elderly and disabled. However, it does not state that in pick. So there was a pause because most of the people that have applied for Boulevard Gardens are not elderly or disabled. So we didn't know if we could move forward, but now that we have the approval from HUD to move forward, you know, just single people can move in that aren't happy to be elderly and disabled. That was the whole of that for Boulevard Gardens.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Um, I'm going to have to call a recess at this point. I'm going to take five minutes. All right, I called the meeting back to order. We were done with the property manager, so now we need housing choice voucher.
As of January 1st, we had 45 participants. Yes, ma'am. Four of them are homeowners. We have two put out. We have 138 participants to search for housing. We did inform them about the five mile radius when they were considering units. We have 65 active landlords who had on January 1st who paid $160,000, $167,92 for the month of January. That number will go up and down as we do research. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
I have a question. Ms. Cooper, on the home ownership program, what, does that mean that we're hoping mortgage for the homeowners? Or do they go through a local bank for that?
Horizon holds the mortgage, which is their payment, their portion, and we their portion.
Okay.
It's still on the program. So if they get certified every year, but they don't, it stays the same. And once we certify, we know how much we're going to pay, they know how much they're going to pay.
Okay, so our name is on the mortgage as well, or is it just the homeowner?
I think, I'm not for sure about that, but I know Horizon Bank holds those products. That's where they're located, and that's what we send them.
Is there a percentage? Or is that a case-by-case number that we're paying?
It's case-by-case, everybody's number that we pay is different.
Okay.
Some is higher, some is lower, it just depends on their income.
Oh, good, okay, all right, thank you.
You are back inside, Ms. Cooper. So that brings a question to mind for me. So with that being said, if there's a problem with the home, whose responsibility is it? If the homeowner is paying some, the housing authority is paying some, if there's a repair problem or some type of issue within the home?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it's whoever owns the house. If we own it, or H of S, EMCA, HBI own it, that would probably do the perspective.
So you're saying housing authority, if it's between the tenant who's paying partial payment on it, and housing authority is paying partial payment, are you saying that if there's a problem for repairs, that housing authority would be paying for repairs?
Just a moment, I believe Mr. Rags can give a little more clarification for you.
Because I think we tried to talk, we kind of talked about that, but I'm hearing something different.
Correct, so if a, if someone goes to the home ownership program, they're the designated owner to that piece of land. And whereas the housing authority does assist with paying the mortgage, or I'm sorry, with paying the note with principal and interest, it is the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain that home. It's not the responsibility of the homeowner.
Okay, so the only thing the housing authority is responsible for is that part, financial part of it?
Correct.
The financial burden, nothing else?
Correct.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
I did have one question regarding, we've got 65 active landlords, as we know, we've got people looking for apartments and housing all over the city. Do we have an outreach program to try to bring more landlords in? I've heard of other agencies doing like a, you know, bring in landlords and show them, here's what we need you to do if you'd like to have tenants participate in the program or an educational...
Usually, we get new landlords that pay, take over a property. Like somebody used to go over a property a couple days ago, and then a new landlord came back. They're usually calling, asking us, how do we go about getting in the program? And so to come in and get a landlord back in, we have to just reach out. That's why we must be trying to put together a landlord. We think that if we could get new landlords to sign up, and that's what we get from the five mile radius, some landlords in that vicinity can apply soon.
Okay. Thank you. So that brings us to maintenance. Glenn, our maintenance director, could you give us a report on where we're at on maintenance, please? Step over here to the podium. So that everybody can hear you.
We have three units at the same time. Two out here, one at the counter.
Okay.
That's the thing. Yes.
Have we had a lot of issues lately with heating or plumbing, things like that? Something that we have to contract up for, or have you been able to handle most of the stuff in-house?
In-house, we saw the couple of one, but we had to call the contractors to come take care of, that's the pump here, and the pump on the other side for what you're building.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we have time for, have those pumps been replaced, or are we still waiting for parts? What's going on with those?
Yes.
They're replaced already?
Yes.
Okay.
The last guy that called in here, he says he don't want to put in his house until, until Thursday of this week.
Okay. Okay, do we have any questions for our maintenance department?
No.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving right along. New business, we have a resolution. As I understand it, this is a draft, and we can get together if we need to discuss any changes to be made. The resolution of understanding with HDI, and as we have representatives of HDI here, we can kind of make sure that we're on the same page. Are we going to move forward with a joint meeting before we pass it? Is that what we want to do?
Here, I would suggest that this resolution be tabled so we can bring this to the other board, and then also that everybody can review it to make sure that it's something that we're all in agreement with, to have an understanding of what is meant by this resolution.
Okay. Yeah, as I've seen it for the first time today, that makes sense to me, is we have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second. The vote.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ben?
Aye.
Commissioner Reina?
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
With four ayes, zero nos, the resolution has been tabled.
Pending for the meeting. So that brings us to property ownership. As we've just discussed, we kind of have an issue as far as for what HDI owns, what Michigan City Housing Authority owns, and even the status of the home ownership program owners themselves. Because whether it was poor communication in the past, or just a lost paperwork, whatever the reason is, we don't know exactly where we're at on ownership. I know we've spoken with the attorney's office to try to get a copy of all the deeds that are in our name and all of those in HDI's name, so that we can kind of clear this confusion up. And at least that way, we know whose responsibility it is when things need to be repaired and how to move forward, especially if we have a resolution with HDI, things get charged properly.
Okay. Mr. Chair, we have reached out to Indianapolis Field Office in reference to the copies of DOTs that they have. They would likely not have physical DOT copies because when these properties were acquired, there's a record retention schedule for keeping physical copies of things as a governmental entity. The reporters' office would have those, but we don't want to go through the process of pulling title for all of that. That gets pretty costly. There are various systems that we've gone through. We have a number of properties that we, that are owned by the Michigan City Housing Authority that are not public housing, they're in what's known as business activities, and we can get into business activity a little bit later. The Michigan City Housing Development Incorporated properties, MCHDI properties, as well as we have gone through PIC, which is a system that maintains all properties that are public housing. So when a property is designated to be public housing and capital funds are spent on it, a DOT or a declaration of trust is filed with the reporters' office. Those properties are then put into the PIC system by address. And we have a listing of everything that's in the PIC system by address. We've gone through all of the MCHA properties, we have separated the PIC addresses from the non-PIC addresses. And those, as I understand from talking to staff, those non-PIC addresses are considered business activity. I'm not really 100% on business activity right now, but that is where we are. I do understand that Bruce Metzler, who is the public housing director for Indianapolis Field Office, is recently back in the country, probably trying to catch up. He has not responded, I did reach out to him as recently as this morning, so we're moving ahead.
Good. I realize at this point, I skipped over the attorney's report during the staff reports.
No problem.
Listening to you talk, I'm like, you should have said more. So could you enlighten us on your attorney's report before we move any further?
No problem at all. As Ms. Garman said, there were no 10, 16 years old office for a victory this month. So there is no progress there to discuss. On pending lawsuits against the housing authority, there's no progress or updates on anything there to discuss. So that includes the attorney's report at this time.
All right, and then I want to go back to the property ownership. Did anybody have questions for the attorney?
No.
Commissioner Reina? Okay. At our last meeting, it was brought up that there were, there's a question of keys, and just in general, the security of our tenants, which we take very, we have a priority there, and we need to ensure that everybody's safe and feels safe, not just are, but actually we're doing something. I have had conversations with an outside security contractor utilizing grant funds that we were awarded last year to move forward to install cameras and new locks on various properties. I would also like authorization for the board or a motion to modernize the locks in our business activities and even HDI properties, so that we no longer necessarily have to have a physical key, that we can have electronic locks that log who enters, and you can even have notifications, who's coming into your house and when, so that our tenants know if that door's been opened and who's opening it. I would like, these kind of locks are like $100, $150. So we're talking a few properties, it's not going to be a small amount, but it's something I think we can do, but I would need the board's approval before we spend any money on something like that. I just think it would make our tenants more secure, and it's overdue as far as for, like I said, for HDI business activities, the scattered sites, our actual Lakeland Estates and Boulevard Gardens, those I'm hoping we can work out with Vercata and the grant money, and maybe have to maybe add a little extra to make sure everything's locked up that way.
As far as HDI, we can't do any type of voting or communication as far as those properties. But as far as anything that's under the umbrella of housing authority, are you talking about like Boulevard Garden and Lakeland Estates?
No, that's what I was just saying, like Boulevard Garden and Lakeland Estates, we're going to go with electronic locks, like a key card type access. And for the other ones, the scattered sites, the properties, business activities, things like that, that aren't in a development, they're just going to have individual key code locks that, like I said, are able to log who enters the apartment. I have one on my own apartment, it works fine, you know. If I need to let the repairman in, I can do that remotely. And if somebody comes in while I'm not there, you know, whether it's a landlord or whoever.
Do you know what agency you're gonna go, that are you gonna just...
I would just have, yeah.
Okay.
I would just find the best option out there, find out exactly how many we need, and then have our maintenance staff install them.
So the access would be a code given by, or a code developed by the agency and given to the tenant? So does the agency have...
Depending on the locks that we choose, and I would prefer to have one that operates in such a way that the tenant can choose their own code, and maintenance would have, like I said, so you know who's in your apartment. There won't just be one standard code. If maintenance needs to come in, you'll see maintenance enter your apartment at this time and lock the door at this time. So you would know, you know, again, who's coming and going in. The Vercata electronic locking system would work in a similar fashion. It would log who's coming and going in your apartment. And like I said, I think that would just make everybody safer. I believe I've tracked down, pardon me, I believe I've tracked down all of the keys as of this point. I know there was a question about a couple of them out there, but I had a discussion this morning with our attorney Harris. I think I know where they all are now, but I have to double-check the records and what I have. At the same time, it's just better to make sure everybody's safe. And these, it's a modern system, it just makes sense. You will know who's going in, and we won't have lockouts in the middle of winter. Oh, who's got a key who can get over there in three feet of snow? We had a tenant that locked himself out with a pan on the stove, and we had an emergency, you know, how to get over there. We finally got him in, but at the same time, if we had the electronic locks, that wouldn't happen.
And so if someone decides to give their code to a family member or whatever, that's on them?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, if they're providing access to their apartment, obviously they're doing that. But if we enter it, then there's going to be a code specifically assigned to whoever's going in. And like I said, those locks aren't expensive. They have fail safes on them, so there is a key available if all else fails, but...
Is this an emergency purchase for the equipment, or do we need to set it up for quote? I mean, timing is an issue.
Right.
I just want to say, if I can make a recommendation that that could just be referred, that the thought be referred to staff
because the board cannot self-procure.
Okay.
To make sure that we're just going to...
Right, yep. Yeah, I wasn't sure if that had to be procured if we just bought the parts and replaced them.
There is a micro purchase threshold under which procurement doesn't have to happen under the traditional way, however, because we don't have a procurement officer, procurement officer that usually goes up to the ED. I have to do a little investigation to find out what happens when there's no procurement officer and there is no ED.
Okay.
But it's a pretty bright line that the board cannot self-procure.
Okay. All right.
Can you just take, you can take it in?
Yeah.
I like the concept of what you're saying, but I think it needs to be a little bit more detailed, uh, to understand.
Do I like...
A little more detailed information.
Commissioner Reina, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just a quick question. Have we even installed dead bolts in any of the apartments, like we had discussed in the past?
It's a good question.
Lakeland, yes, we have installed it, only on the renovated units, the dead bolts are being installed.
Okay, so we only have dead bolts on some units, otherwise everything else just has one lock?
Still the same, yes.
Okay.
Because that is probably not going to be a bigger price tag, so it may have to be procured.
Right, well, and like I said, if we can get things moving with the other security company, they'll provide the locks at that time. Is there anything else on this? Okay. Do we need a motion to table it, or, I mean, because there's no motion on the floor to actually do something, so we don't need a table motion?
Correct.
Okay.
It can just be referred to staff, and staff will present a, present a report to the board.
Okay. And that probably goes along too with janitorial services. When we had our distinguished visitors from Indianapolis and Washington DC touring our facilities, they noticed that we're not doing a good job of keeping them clean. The residents aren't doing a good job of keeping them clean, but altogether, it needs to be done. And maintenance doesn't always have time to go in there, sweep the floor and clean the glass, but it should be done. People should live in a respectful home. And just because, you know, it's public housing, doesn't mean it needs to be ignored and forgotten, because people aren't ignored and forgotten. So I was kind of looking at if we could get a janitorial service, again, if there's a procurement or contractor, we just hire an industrial cleaner to take care of both the housing units and the office here, especially with like COVID and stuff this time of year, it's good to have things cleaned and sanitized, not just cigarette butts in the corners and things like that.
If you want to bring in a janitorial service that's still following, procurement, okay. If you wanted to hire janitors, that's different.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Vote.
I have a question on the, talk about our residents, janitorial services?
Not in their homes, no, no, in the halls.
Okay.
In the halls and the stairwells.
In the common area.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're not talking about cleaning people's houses.
Right.
That's clearly their responsibility, but the hallways and, you know, if you walk into a place in its common area, everybody argues about who left the trash. It doesn't matter, clean up the trash. So this would just make it, again, so people like where they're living.
About janitorial services. We have a tenant that has been helping us a little bit with cleaning the buildings. She did put in an application, you know, to be hired, and, you know, that would kind of look good for us to hire, you know, maybe a resident that can help take care of the buildings. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Possibly.
You know, that, we do have one person that is willing to help us out, so that's... Putting it out there, please.
a, just putting it out there, please. Yeah, section three, yeah.
All right, well, that brings us to old business and, uh, our executive director search, which is moving along, I think, rather well. The members of the nominating committee are here. I believe we've reached a, a point where we're ready to hold the final interviews and we'll need the whole board together to do that. So we'll have to schedule a special meeting for next week as long as everybody's available and, uh, hold any final interviews. Uh, I believe we have a recommendation for the board and that would be, um, we would take care of that at the executive session, you know. Here's, here's who we're recommending, here's who we're gonna talk to. Uh, any more comment from the nominating committee, Mike?
No.
No. What you said is appropriate.
Okay. Uh, is the board available for next Thursday? Like at same time, 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock, depending on the availability of the, the interviewee? So it'll be Thursday, the 22nd at 3 o'clock?
I, I think so. I, I actually don't know, I have to look at my calendar at work.
Okay. Well, and I'll also have to check with, you know, our candidates to make sure that that works, but right now I would like to, and we'll, we'll put it out the, the announcement for the special meeting and we'll hold the interview next Thursday and that will hopefully move us along to having an ED who can do the hiring and, and do the procurement and things that we, we need to get done. Because the longer we're without an ED, the longer the list gets. Outside agency assistance. I know that I've spoken with, um, BDO to help us with our finances. We had an agreement, agreed to in principle in December, that for some reason was never signed and never put into action. And BDO reached out in January and saying, hey, where are we with this? And after some conversation with them, we can move forward as long as I asked for guidance if we need to vote for it again, since we no longer have that ED we said could sign it, if I can sign that agreement and continue to get their help on our finances, because they'll come in and they'll do an assessment and show us where we need to go, improvements we can make and, and carry that forward.
The board chair can sign on the agency behalf.
Okay. Because they said that the agreement on their end, they don't need to change any prices or anything like that because it's just gonna be a standard, come in, look at what they need to do and then they'll come back with another, um, scope of services, here's how we can help and what the price for that would be. That would be another agreement we'd have to sign or the new executive director would sign after we approve it. And we also looked at having Gary Housing Authority help us. Because we don't have an ED, because we don't have procurement process, because we don't have the things that we need, it would be good to have the outside agency and their experience. I believe at this time we have a candidate strong enough that if we can get them in place by the time Gary is able to move and help us, we won't need their help. We'll have an ED that can take care of the, the situation as is. And I think that's the, the same feeling the nominating committee had, so we might not need that, those services.
I think we need to wait and save our opinions to our executive session.
Okay.
Not lead in any way.
Well, I just, you know, whether or not we need to continue with the attorneys trying to look at an agreement with another agency right now. So if we can put that on pause, is kind of what I'm saying.
I feel like we should move forward with the Gary help. It would, if nothing else, the new ED would have some assistance and be a Kickstarter for them, other than trying to put all their eggs in one basket that can diversify and tag team. But I think any help we can get, as long as Gary is willing to come over and help, we have approval from HUD, I think we should take advantage of that.
Yeah, as I understand it, it's, um, the field office that is kind of driving the boss here.
And I think it's a good idea.
Okay. So do you know where we are at with, because Gary's board has to approve their assistance and then they have to send over someone. Do we know where that's at?
I have not particularly been involved in that. That's been attorney Harris.
Okay.
In my understanding, it is, um, with HUD, that was the whole of that.
They're kind of driving the boss.
Okay. And that brings me back to progress with HUD. As I've said, I've spoken with, uh, pretty much anybody I can. I've spoken with Mr. Bruce Nesr, uh, Valerie Calhoun and Mr. Rick Menopio to see what parts of the system we can improve on so that we can get access to our funds and make sure we don't miss anything, make sure nothing's being misspent or misappropriated. And again, with the outside, with BDO's help, making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's as far as our finances go. I, I think we're making good progress, but we are not there. I still do not have ELOX access, which means I cannot draw down our capital funds until that happens. And, yeah, that's really all I have right now.
Do you have any idea what the whole of this?
I sent an email, but I haven't had time to get back to see if there was response. And that was today because it's been about two weeks since I've heard anything, like they said I need to do this and I did that and like, it's been about two weeks. They said eight to 10 days, it's been more than that, so that's why I sent an email to see where we're at. And as I said, Indianapolis and DC said, assures we're gonna have every help that we can get, so I, I hope to have an answer soon on that.
I have a question on that, just for my own clarification. Will you, when you draw down like that, you draw down on a weekly basis or a monthly basis?
As I understand it, we have to draw down and then we have about three days to spend the money that we draw down. So it's, it's a weekly basis as far as for, okay, here's what's been approved to be spent. We pull that money down. It's already been allocated, it just, it's actually gonna be written.
And what happens to those funds that we're not pulling down?
Uh, there's a time limit, they expire. We no longer have access to them if we don't do things HUD's way.
So then just request them again?
Well, so...
Stay in that same pot?
The, the way I understand it, there's a time limit on each pot. Every year we have capital funds in, in whatever amount and then we have to pull them down to meet the funds that we allocate. We can't just say, well, we know we're gonna spend $2 million, so let's just, no, you can't do it that way. You have to have the contracts, you have to have everything in order, this is how much we're gonna go spend and then you spend it. Is, is that?
That's a...
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm not misspeaking here because this is all new to me, as you guys know, so I'm getting quite the education along the way and, and just trying to get it all done, but done the right way. So, yeah, if, if we don't spend certain monies by a certain time, they're just gone. We can't get them back, we can't help our tenants with them and that, that's a mistake we can't make.
But right now, we're just having a problem with you getting the authorization and the pool.
It's just an authorization thing at this point. However, because of past instances, we are running up against some of our deadlines of money that has already been allocated, our agency that has not been drawn down and, used accordingly.
Hopefully the visitors that came will help influence some of that.
That's my hope. Uh, Commissioner remarks. I know this used to be a part of our meeting, so I put it back on the agenda just so we all have an opportunity to maybe address, uh, public comments or anything else that we want to kind of, ideas that got missed before they got to the agenda. So, um, Commissioner Bennett, do you have anything to add or anything you need, like you'd like to see worked on?
No, I think we've covered everything. We're just trying to coordinate with this board and the other board so that we can get some clarification and understanding on some of the things between the two. So that's my main thing is hopefully Mr. Harris can get that joint session settled and both in there.
There's no comments?
Commissioner Rena? Is she still there? Do you have any comments right now? We're on Commissioner comments. You have anything to add?